I will come in quickly and I'll try to speak as clearly as I possibly can with this mask on. We do want to be very careful and respectful and make sure that we're being as safe as possible. So I appreciate everyone distancing and wearing their masks and everything. We have several public hearings to take place at the first part of our agenda and there are messages back here on the podium if anybody would like to grab one to follow along. The first one is public hearing on the 2021 proposed budget. So Pete, are you going to conduct that hearing?
Well, we certainly can, or I can, Mayor. We've got to get Johnny working up too. So the public hearing on the budget document, the FY 2021 proposed budget of the city of Tifton will be presented to the council on Thursday, May 21st, 11:45. We did that now the public hearing is to allow anyone wishing to make comments on the budget to attend this meeting and ask those questions. And then the next, the final step would be the adoption and that is scheduled for Monday, June 15th at the regular council meeting. So I will tell you if there are any comments and for the audience that since we met last time, the hotel motel numbers have been adjusted. So I wanted to tell you about that. We did meet with the tourism board last week and reran those numbers. Dana collected it or put on the budget sheet the way it's supposed to be done at the 40%. Tourism board is accustomed to looking at a budget number. So we changed that back. So the Tiff County Tourism Board line item will change from $5.60,000 to $720,000. And that's the way they do their math. I don't know if it'll come out to $720,000, but we corrected it based off of what they're accustomed to. So that has been changed and I did submit that to Tyron Spearman for the board's review. So I wanted to make sure you knew that. Also, future adjustments, obviously, there are some things changing. We do not know if that's, that will impact the budget at all. But if it does, we'll be prepared for that and we'll have to do a budget adjustment if necessary, which I'll bring that forward to your attention. But all in all, the document is ready and it is balanced. And then also I did send a note out last week about sales tax. It appears our numbers aren't as bad as we assumed they could have been. Sales tax was down about 3%, which doesn't equate to much as far as our monthly allowance for local option sales tax. We run somewhere in the range of $250,000 to $280,000 a month for collections. That is a big portion of our general fund. So 3% did not amount to anything. I was very glad to see that. And that's a good sign that money is still being spent in the community. That was a big iffy one for us. I anticipated 12, so I was way off, which was a good thing. However, hotel motel, 70% down for the month. Big numbers, big revenue that we lost, obviously, that is cause and effect. And the tourism board does know that. But I'm certain that by July, August, September, for sure, that should rebound and pick back up. Overall, the budget, that's the only changes and suggestions I have. And with that, if there's any public comments, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay. Does any of the council members, do any of y'all have any comments or questions? I know we went through this very thoroughly, but we are required to do several hearings to give everyone the opportunity on a public standpoint to ask questions or think into explanation about anything. Is there anyone that would like to comment or question about the budget? Okay, gentlemen, y'all good? Everybody good? Okay. All right, I think we're good. I'll see if anybody that wants to make a comment or ask a question. So we'll go on to the next public hearings. Was that much trouble?
No, it was mayor.
Well, why don't we go ahead and go into the work, then we can come back. Let's do that. Okay. I didn't realize that. Okay. No problem. All right, well, we will skip down to item number five in our agenda and then we'll come back and pick up the public hearings at 5:30 or shortly thereafter. We have an annual update from one of our longstanding Keep Tiff Beautiful members, Mr. Dave Petzel, who is Mr. Volunteer of the Year. Volunteers, everything, Dave, if you want to come up here to the office.
With the mask on, I think we need to.
I know it's hard to hear in front of the staff.
All right, good evening, Mayor and council people and city manager and clerk of the city. Good to see you all. Now, keep in mind, this is 2019 fiscal year, okay? So it's all history. But I think that I need to share this with you. You probably received it in the mail many months ago and just threw it in there with everything else because that's where mine was when I needed to get it out today, but I knew I had it. Okay, annual report fiscal year 2019, Keep Tiff Beautiful. I do not have budget figures, so I won't bore you with that. Brad Barbie was president and he's the ground superintendent at ABAC. Chris Beals is a secretary and he's a biology professor at ABAC. Josh Slavin is the treasurer and I don't know what he does for a living. Karen Schultz was a garden coordinator, of course, she's a research scientist out at UGA. Lori Felton, that we all know, I imagine, from my ABAC years, is the adopt a mile coordinator. Catherine Wilson is a member. My wife and myself are both members. One appointed by the city and one appointed by the county, but I reminded them that the city was in the county, so it was okay. I live in the county. Yes, yes, yes. Ryan Vorse, Sandy Newman, Billy Jean Melton, Cecile Gillyard, Linda Drouly, and Jimmy Dill. That's last year's. Now, Billy Jean is not with us anymore. She decided that was too much work. We have added the mayor's wife from Ta-ta.
Patty.
Okay. Senior moments, I hate them. Anyway, that's okay. Keith Beasley.
Patty.
Patty, right, 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 right. So we have two from Ta-ta. We have two from Omega. That's Cecile Gillyard and Linda Drouly. And the rest of us are either Tiff County or the city of Tifton. All right, the mission of Keep Tiff Beautiful is to work together as a unified community. Got it? Unified community to create good stewards of the earth through beautification, education. Okay? Our slogan, a clean community starts in your own front yard. I drove through the housing area behind the Eighth Street Middle School today and needed to make a phone call to the housing authority. Those yards are stuff like this and everybody's home. So I just, you know, I just said I'd just point that out to you, save your trip, Danny. There's also a bunch of houses that, I mean, several, on Main Street between 20th and 12th that have fallen down, not in repair, and the yards are like a jungle. Okay. Okay, good show. All right, our objectives are to achieve sustained litter reduction as appropriate for the residents of Tiff County municipalities located therein, to promote interest and pride in the general improvement of the environment of Tifton, Tiff County, and emphasize the benefits of a clean, healthy, beautiful area. And one of the things that comes to my mind when I get to this point is you only make the first impression one time. And that's why I'm sharing things with him as I ride around and see buildings falling down, yards that are mess and there's a lot of them, okay? But, you know, that distracts from that first time good image. And we've got a lot of positives, but we need to maintain them. All right, we expect to inspire, initiate, plan, direct, and coordinate programs for litter control and prevention in cooperation with individuals, businesses, industry, city and county governments, schools, and public and private organizations. And we have one staff person from the city, Mr. Danny over here, and the rest of us are all volunteers, okay? We don't get paid a cent, but we spend a little money to help make it work. And we encourage the planting and preservation of trees, flowers, plants, shrubbery, and other objects of natural ornamentation. And we try to stimulate interest and action toward conservation of resources through recycling. Let me remind you or ask you to call Karen and tell her the third, fourth, and fifth, which is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, is the sale day at Bob's for the plants that they want to get. My wife was hoping to find the answers and she did, she shared that with me. All right, our goals are to promote beautification in Tifton by running the Adopt a Mile program, the community garden, the beauty spot of the month, and bring one for the chipper. Those are recurring events. Participate and lead cleanup events such as tire recycling, e-cycle recycling, sensitive document shredding, cleanup days sponsored by the city or the county, okay? And keep in mind that we did not have our April semi-annual events and you know why, and we'll try to get it in the fall, okay? So we missed that, but that's life. Try to educate our young people as a goal and spread the word about our mission. Now, last year, we worked with the mayor's tire collection event and that was a community cleanup day. Our volunteers went out and gathered 777 used tires laying around the city and with a grant that we get from Keep Georgia Beautiful, I believe. Jessica? Keep Georgia Beautiful gives us the money for the tire thing? EP?
The state, Mr. Davis.
Okay, okay. Oh, oh, was it? Okay, okay, good show. And we had three teams of two each volunteers that picked up 252 tires on the south side that morning and brought them over and we put them in the trailer. So we filled up a semi that morning. Then when the county had their tire collection later on during the year, we gathered up 83 tires on our roads and streets and took them out to the county facility and put those in the recycling. So, you know, we're trying to get it all done. Adopt a mile. I don't understand why you get a hamburger and a drink and you throw all the wrappers out the window on the ground, always. You know, the on-ramp on 20th Street, southbound, is always a mess and there are always wrappers from the hamburger joints, okay? We have 10 different organizations in town that participate in that and we have at least seven folks participating each time we have a pickup. And it normally runs about an hour and a half is our experience. If we get, you know, if we get seven or eight there, we can get started and we'll be done. We have the bags picked up, thrown in somebody's truck and brought into town and put in a dumpster and it's, you know, it's done in an hour and a half or two hours. We spend 168 hours, at least, that's all I can say, at least. Examples of the organizations of ours, you've got St. Anne's Episcopal Church, you've got the Cappasigna Group from ABAC, you've got Tiff Area Greenways Association, the Collegiate FFA from ABAC, and our good friend and standard bearer Duncan McCuskey. We helped organize a day of service because the ABAC folks wanted to get out, young folks wanted to get out and collect trash back on August the 14th last year. But let me remind you that the Keep Tiff Beautiful funds were used to pay for the bags, the gloves, the safety vests, and the tons that we use, okay? Other accomplishments. I've got another slide here. That's out of order. I'll get to it in a minute, sorry.
Mr. Davis, if you want, I can make copies of the other accomplishments and make sure everyone gets it if you'd like.
I thought you'd probably already done that, but...
It's in the back.
Okay, okay. I thought you had it. Right, okay. Now, let's talk about the community garden on North Central, right by the drainage ditch there, which is, of course, headwaters or a river. There are 20 raised garden beds. Last year, there were 14 gardeners and I see a witness sitting over on the side that could verify what went on out there that year. Year-round growing vegetables and flowers and fruit. The garden is pesticide-free for the environmentalists. We have identified the rare pollinators and you have some devices out there to facilitate that. And Keep Tiff Beautiful funds were used to buy soil, mulch, seed, and weed cloth, which is your dark canvas or net to keep weeds from growing. And our members volunteered to keep the grass cut around up that garden. And they had a workday, by the way, yes, Saturday, Saturday morning, they had a workday. And I managed to get by there and at about 10 after nine, it was scheduled for nine, at 10 after, they had two, four, six, seven out there pulling weeds, putting down mulch, cutting grass. So they're keeping it looking good, folks, keeping it looking good. All right, and then the other part in the education arena. We participate in the UGA AG Day, which is twice a year, in the fall and in the spring. In the spring, it's the third graders and they learn about planting seeds and plants. And in the spring are the fourth graders who see the result of harvesting of those same plants and crops. So it, and we purchased books about composting, littering, and we've taken those to nine elementary school media specialists. And we like the new World of Education alignment with three schools for K through 12. And as a parent, I know that's smart. And from the kid's standpoint, it's an opportunity to reduce a lot of the confusion that's been going on through the years. Beauty Spot of the Month. We have one for residential and we have one for businesses. And we publish the results on grapevine, in the newspaper, and on our webpage, courtesy of Danny and his folks over in Community Development. Keep one, I bring one for the chipper. There are not many green Christmas trees anymore. The numbers turned in has gone down severely, okay? The timing has to be such that we wait till the first Saturday in January to do that. And so depending upon how close Christmas is to that Saturday determines how many trees get to us versus just go on the curb. And we don't have a count on those that the solid waste contractor picks up. I don't know if they pass those to you or not. But, you know, it might be something to ask for when you renew your contract, okay? Among other things. We use social media to spread the word about our mission and our events. Active on Facebook. We're 106 followers. And obviously, if I don't follow that, I know what's going on. We also participate in Town and Gown, which is the college in the city. That's a good opportunity to get the word out because you get to meet a lot of the freshmen that still are a little skittish coming in from high school and they still want to get involved in the community. And that works well to get the volunteers. And then we tie that into Adopt a Mile and these other projects. So we're able to get a lot of participation from out there and you'll see some pictures in your packet. And this year, we've changed officers a little bit. Karen Schultz is the president and Ryan is still the vice. Is it Ryan? No, I'm wrong. Josh. Josh is still the vice. Secretary is still Chris Beal and Josh is the treasurer. Now, from a money standpoint, Ta-ta and Omega have no skin in the game and the county of Tiff has no skin in the game. You are the only financial supporters and you've been cutting that almost every year. So we're down to $1,000. So think about it. I understand what's going on. I just heard the city manager here run through the numbers a little bit. But I wanted you to know that we're out there doing things and that people like it. What was amazing, Saturday morning, all those folks that I saw out there, and I sat there from eight till about 10 after nine, were all young couples and one single guy, all young folks. Not our generation at all, the next one down. And that is great to know, okay? So you all can help us both in fiscal resources and other fiscal resources. But we try to make good purchases. For instance, you heard me tell Danny that they want to get some more plants out there. They want them when they go on sale at Bob's and it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week. So in case you need that, that's advantage of getting these briefings to know what's going on because it's on the front page of the paper while we had a Tifton paper. Okay, any questions?
Y'all have any questions?
Yeah, I do. You say that the county, the county budget doesn't provide anything?
Never has. Not in my 20 years.
And the city of Omega and Ta-ta don't do?
They do not and they never have either.
But you guys go over there and help clean up their communities?
We do. Yes, we do. And of course, their members will orchestrate or manage that day. But if you go out there and look at all that real estate between the highway off to the right going west, the trees, we did a lot of planting out there two years ago, or maybe even three years ago.
Is Ms. Gillyard still on that committee?
Who?
Ms. Gillyard.
Yes, yes.
I believe she is a city council member of the city of Omega.
Yes, she is. Well, and the mayor's wife, the other one, okay? So they understand.
Yeah. Well, I just, you know, here we are taking city money and cleaning up unincorporated areas. Well, or outside the city limits, you know, and it's, I guess that's the look at.
Right.
I thought some money came through the, I don't know if it's the land, not the landfill, but the... Help me here, Pete.
Yes, you are correct. The money for KTB comes from the landfill and hence the county says that they're putting in dollars just the same as we. So it does, it has been funded out of the landfill. And we did look at that. We did have a line item out of our budget, but we, two years ago, changed that to come out of the landfill budget. And again, they're doing great work and thanks to Mr. Davis and the whole committee of...
See, I didn't know that. So you guys got to talk to us.
Yeah, well, I mean, when I went to the meeting...
Because we can brag about that, but I didn't know about it. We're not mind readers.
That's why the county says they get, that they do contribute through the landfill, which is why we took the money out of our...
It's not in the city general fund is what I'm saying.
We eliminated that line item because it does come from the landfill.
It used to, is that correct?
That's it, it used to.
Okay, I thought it did.
That's right.
That's why I made that comment.
But we stopped that a couple of years ago.
Okay, all right, I'm cool with that.
That makes it a little more fair.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, now, skin is in the game from everybody.
Well, we just, on behalf of the council, let us say thank you to you and all the volunteers that work, because the efforts are seen.
Oh, absolutely.
It's never a new job.
That's right.
We'll never, you know, get the Giselle. And it says, the work is done.
Right. And unless you all have changed the plans, the fall semi-annual, we will again have a shredding document exercise and we need that. We haven't had that in over a year and we'll...
Probably do the shredder, the tire collection, maybe the e-recycle.
Well, that would be good. We haven't had that either. So we, yeah, those, two of those, we have not had.
Right, we'll do our best.
Right, that's good. All right.
And Mr. Davis, before we leave, one final figure to make sure, because I thought we talked about last, or last year, if we didn't, the budget number that we've been using for KTB is $3,000, not $1,000. So if you have not...
No.
All right, so the year, we got one month to submit some things and I think you still have some money left.
Oh, yes, and we're planning on spending it this first two weeks of June.
All right, well, then...
Because we know if we lose it or lose it.
Starts again. We put that, we kept that $3,000 in the budget, all right? So I don't know what they spent this year, but it sounds like you have a little money left. If you were on the discussion, that was $1,000.
Yeah, we were.
All right, so that's $3,000. That's, I committed that last year and I remember we left that. So you do have a little flexibility there.
Good, 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 good. Thanks, folks.
Carry on the good work.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
And I just want to challenge any of you who are on social media. They do have a really nice Keep Tiff Beautiful Facebook page. So go in and like that so you can get notification of when special activities are happening or cleanup events or working in the garden and share that on your page so that we can get the word out about the good work that these folks do. So thank you, Mr. Davis, for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
And it's very much appreciated by this council. All right, I'd like to call Ms. Abby McLaren. She's going to give a downtown committee update.
There is one, there are most boards public hearing.
Oh, I did one page at the time. Oh, sorry, Dallas. Yeah. Okay, Rob, let's go back to items number two, three, and four on our agenda. Six thousand dollars passed for a buy some timeframe, it is 5:30.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on application PP 20-0006. The applicant is the city of Tifton. This is a proposal for a text amendment to the Land Development Code laid with fencing around detention grounds. Proposals to read section 6.10.1 of the technical standards in Appendix 1 of the Land Development Code. At this time, I'd like to ask the council if they have any conflicts regarding consideration of this application. Has any of the applicants or opponents in the application contributed at least $250 and near the campaign from the last year over the past two years?
No.
Do you or any members of your family have any property interests that would be affected by the proposed zoning or classification of property or this text amendment, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a property interest in any business entity that has a property interest in a real property that would be affected by the proposed reclassification of property, this text amendment, whether it's a positive or negative impact?
No.
At this time, I'd like to ask Danny Wallace, the Department of Public Safety, to come up and describe to the council and to the public what the, this text amendment is related to and is first.
Good afternoon. So this text amendment is to, we have two sections that identify fences for minimum safety concerns for retention and detention ponds. It's outlined in chapter six of the LDC and it's also outlined in this section that Rob discussed. One section talks about a four-foot fence and one section talks about a six-foot fence. So we're removing an entire section that talks about the six-foot fence. Any questions?
Mayor, council, I will tell you, this, sometimes we learn and have to change by example. Sometimes we find things to say that just is not smart. This happens to be one of those where it's just... This happens to be one of those where it just did not make sense, the new car wash on eighty-two. They have a detention, because the more you build, obviously, we got to, they've got to engineer for stormwater. And having a small, little detention area for a new business, and having a six-foot fence around it, is not pleasing. So Danny recognized that, and now we're a little more consistent. This is one of the smart things that we could do to adjust, to make sure that we're keeping track of what we're doing, and it makes sense for the business owner. So this is one of those examples I want to point out to you.
Would it be dependent upon the zoning of the property that would, I guess, in the past, it would determine if it needed a six or a four-foot fence?
Well, actually, it was divided up between retention and detention pond. And in chapter six reference, it talks about a four-foot fence, and if it has a certain slope, or if it's less than two foot deep, then you didn't need a fence. And also, it was a little bit more flexible with the fencing material. So it didn't have to be chain link. This mask, I feel like I'm... Can't get enough air. So in appendix one, it talks about a six-foot fence. And I think the idea behind that was, that's detention only. That's if they are holding or retention. I get those confused. Then it must have a six-foot fence. So we identified that during the project for the Oasis car wash. And that's primarily because their retention detention was actually facing eighty-two. So it was more of a unsately thing than anything else for them.
Is the retention fences, is that an EPD rig, or is that just something?
It's a minimum safety requirement for, that we put in our ordinance to keep people from falling in these things. That's why we chose the four-foot fence. It still provides some safety. It still looks good. Gives them some flexibility for the fencing materials, so they don't have to use just chain link. And anything that's less than two foot, because you could have one that's, you know, only twelve inches deep. Why would you need a fence around that?
Right.
You know, so that's the reason why we decided to go with that. When we still have that minimum safety factor, and, you know, we're offering some flexibility.
All right, I noticed in your comments, planning and zoning, have you reviewed everything?
They have reviewed everything. They approved it unanimously. Very, very little discussion.
All right, this time, I'd like to ask if anybody is here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Mayor? If you would just take your name and address, please?
Lonnie Lewis, twenty-six eighteen Diana Circle. Don't really have an opposition or, 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 or again. But I do have a concern. The four-foot high fence, to me, would seem easier for kids to get over the fence, wind up getting in one of these ponds, especially if they're deep and around. Or snake bed, or, you know, whatever, whatever accident could occur. It could occur easier with a four-foot high fence than rather a six-foot fence. The other thing, the retention, or maybe it's just a detention pond that's behind the Red Owl and the Jimmy John's town. That's in my neighborhood, and that has grown up considerably with a lot of weeds and debris that's in the pond. That seems like an unsafe area, in the sense that you'd have bugs, like mosquitoes breeding and that sort of thing. Plus reptiles, because it's kind of a lowland area anyway. So those are the things with these retention ponds that I have a concern about. How we address them, I don't know what the best way to do that is, but just wanted to bring those concerns out.
Sure.
That would be fine, if you would, and this is a public hearing. Just as to further comment on that, we regulate pools. And the state has adopted the international pool and spa code. And so any body of water that's greater than two foot, it lines up with the international code council, which the state has adopted, and it's required to have a forty-eight-foot fence. Also, the thing behind the Red Owl, that is actually considered a channel, a river, a creek. So that's a little different.
So now, would we maintain those? Do we, does the city maintain those creeks?
I made a note. Ms. Lewis, I'll be glad to check on that tomorrow. I don't know if that's, if we have an easement, or we have some kind of ditch maintenance in there, but I'll certainly check tomorrow.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Or there being no further public comment, ask that public hearing be closed? The next application for a public hearing tonight is application PP two zero 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 nine. It's an application by the city of Tipton, again, to amend the Land Development Code, to add a chapter eleven to the Land Development Code, to provide for commercial and residential design standards. Again, I'd like to ask the city council, conflict of interest questions. Has any of these applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least two hundred and fifty dollars to any campaigns for election during the past two years?
No.
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 Do you or any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by the proposed text amendment to amend the Land Development Code concerning design standards? Whether that has a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
Do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest? Any real property that would be affected by the proposed text amendment, whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
No.
All right, again, I'd like to ask Danny, if you could come up and describe to the council and the public, the proposed addition of chapter eleven dealing with commercial residential design standards.
Absolutely. Now, this is addressed later in the council. The planning and zoning board makes several recommendations for this part. Is it appropriate to go through those now, or do I need to wait until then? And just talk about specifically what the design standards are?
Well, it's my understanding that what you're presenting tonight is what you're asking the council to adopt, which would include the recommendations of planning and zoning, so I would include those as well.
Okay. So this is our continuing discussion on design standards, going all the way back to January. This went before planning and zoning on May the twenty-sixth. And I know you all have a copy, but I made a copy of the table copy, so that way it'd be a little bit easier to follow. It has the, so that way, you know, the page numbers at the top, as well. Okay, so we've been over this, and this went before planning and zoning. And so the first thing that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended was on page three. Under building materials, they suggested that we, instead of calling it allowed materials, call it preferred materials. And the idea behind this was that they're always coming up with new materials and products, and we still, with our design standards, we don't want to prohibit any, anything new. So they thought it best to leave it at preferred. Okay, then the next change comes on, or the next discussion came on page four, under the site, under number three. Says site should include a minimum of any of the two of the following. They thought it should be tied to square footage or size in some way, shape, or form. But they didn't really provide any recommendations for that, and they also said that it could be found just as written. So we had lots of discussion on that, talked about, you know, like a Walmart or a Lowe's, they're going to provide those things anyway. Okay. The next one will be page seven. And the first one is under roofing. So they suggested that we add style as well as material, because, you know, you can get metal roofs in different styles, and same thing with shingles and any other materials. And then finally, is accessory structures at the end of that page. So the original wording just said that your accessory building had to match your house in style and material. And they thought this was a little bit too much. So if somebody wanted a lawnmower shed, they didn't want somebody in a brick house having to build a brick lawnmower shed. And I agree with them. So we added this language. This right here is the permitting requirements for accessory buildings in residential areas. So as long as it's less than a hundred and twenty square feet, we don't require a permit. They still have to follow the setback requirements from the property loans, and I think that will be appropriate. They also called out visibility, saying that if the shed isn't visible from the road, even if it is greater than a hundred and twenty square feet, to add that. And that's actually in the very first part, in the definition of developmental activity. It talks about things that are visible from the road, from the street. And that's actually on page two. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the council, that's all I have.
Any questions?
So Danny, basically, this is a recommendation, planning and zoning as well as staff, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, this time, I'll ask, is there one here that would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application? There being no public comment, I ask that this public hearing be closed? The next public hearing for tonight is on application PP two zero 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 one zero. City of Tipton brought this application to amend the provisions of the Land Development Code, provide for conditional zoning as well as special use permits. And I'd like to ask the conference questions of council. Has any of the applicants or opponents to the application contributed at least two hundred and fifty dollars to any campaign for election during the past two years?
No.
No.
Do you or any, any members of your family have a property interest that would be affected by this proposed text amendment? Whether it be a positive or negative impact?
No.
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 And do you or any members of your family have a financial interest in any business entity that has a property interest, in any real property, that would be affected by this proposed text amendment?
No.
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 All right, again, I'd like to ask, Mr. Wallace, if you would, to come and try to counsel the proposed amendments regarding special use permits as well as conditional zoning.
No handouts this time. So this went to planning and zoning as well, May twenty-sixth. And the board, it's been since March since we talked about any of this, and it's been since March since we've sat down and had discussions with our board. So they wanted to catch y'all up in one night, so we were there for two hours. And we went through this entire thing, and they had one recommendation on the conditional use. That was to modify the table of uses under boarding and rooming houses, to add conditional under multi-residential. And the reason behind that is, is because multi-residential also allows for single-family dwellings. And that's all I have on this one.
That makes sense. All right, any questions?
All right, this time, I'll ask, is there one here that would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Mayor, there being no public comment, ask that public hearing be closed.
All right, thank you. And thank you, Danny, to your department and to the council, and to me, for really analyzing this and making those recommendations. That will help us as we move forward with what we're going to be doing concerning these proposed changes. All right, does anyone have, before we move on, does anyone have any questions about the information we've just discussed? Okay, very good. All right, let's go back to Ms. Abby McLaren.
All right, good evening, council and Mrs. Mayor. I am here to do an update briefly on the thrift store, secondhand store discussion that has been taking place, actually, over a period of two years. I went back and saw that Lucretia first, you know, made some notes about this with the board. And last August, there was a discussion with Bruce, and then a hundred and eighty days ago, we talked about the thrift store moratorium. So in front of you, there is a draft definitions, and that's, I compiled several things from other Georgia communities, as well as other states, in how to define and create a downtown district that is most appealing and most successful for each and every business owner. So there, a lot, there was a lot of discussion about what is an antiques shop versus thrift versus secondhand junk pawn. And so I've just kind of compiled everything that I, that I found that was best. And in actuality, it's really the secondhand stores that we are trying to limit. And the easiest way to look at those two definitions is a thrift store has items that are donated, and a secondhand does not. So there is actually, an actual buyer with a secondhand store. And our committees, we have a city committee and a downtown development authority committee, and we have not all gotten together due to the virus, but we will soon. And this is not, this is not anything to inflict on current stores or prevent them from operating. Again, this is just taking a look at helping to define our downtown district and our central business district and what's best. And the other day, I actually almost hit a car, because they were loading and had parked sideways, and I just didn't see them to load those big giant boxes of furniture and things like that. It just doesn't belong on the main street. So in thinking about what's best for our downtown and planning ahead, this is just something that we will be back to discuss. I just didn't want you guys to think that we had put it on the back burner. And then included in your packet is that draft sheet, and at the bottom, those are the stores that are located within the central core business district of each type right now. So you can see that we, how many of each that we have. And I'll also quickly update you that last night, I talked to some of the restaurants and got some numbers and things, and they are really operating at a sixty percent operational status, if you will, as opposed to a regular month in May and June. So it was a little higher, really, than I anticipated. I think that that just goes to thank you all and the city management team for allowing them to do these temporary outdoor, you know, settings, or the temporary to-go and delivery. And I think that sixty percent is really okay. I talked to Kyle Rhodes also over the weekend, and he, he said sixty percent, you know, they're hanging in tight. So just a brief update on that.
Where are we in that moratorium? I can't remember where we implemented that.
It was, I want to say it was March, so I made a note, we're going to look back the days, because we didn't have any meetings, so we'll probably celebrate that or have to take some action to either extend that if we didn't use the language. I think there was a time...
I don't remember, I'm sorry.
That we put on it, but I'll check on that tomorrow.
All right, any questions or concerns with that issue for?
If you want to take a second, introduce Charlie.
Oh, yeah, sure. This is Charlie Catherine Mullis. She is our intern at our office this summer. She's completing four hundred and nine hours, I believe, so we've really put her to work. And she also helped me look up some of these definitions and things in planning, so she's really getting a good dose.
Yes. That is mine. All right, thank you, Abby. We appreciate that information. All right. The next item on our agenda is the resolution for the proposed FY twenty twenty-one budget. Pete Dana, any updates or changes or anything? I think everything should be pretty straightforward. If someone's got any questions.
Did we ever find out the, the, the final number from GMA on the retirement? I know what we budgeted, but did we ever get that?
We're working on the actuary report, did come in, so, uh, we actually had a call with them today. And, um, the numbers, um, as far as our actuary, there's some data that there's still a little confusing when, between eighteen, June, June of eighteen and September eighteen. But as far as our numbers, our budget numbers will not change whatsoever. So I'm just waiting on some, some data and hopefully have that report back so I can get up to you.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's move on to item number eight. This will be regarding the resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement with South Tifton Development LP. Um, I don't know that we've got any updates or anything on that, but that, that purchase and sale agreement is in your packet, so.
It is, no, Bruce and, and Rob have been working hard on this. And I will tell you that, uh, this is, again, the last step in our application. That is due, I believe, June twelfth, if I remember correctly. So this is the sales agreement. This, again, it's a property transaction. If, um, we were awarded the, the grant itself, then, um, like we talked about, we'd be selling the proper, selling the property to them. So, um, that was the deal all along, but, uh, we're, everything is on course and working right along what we're supposed to be doing.
Mayor, council, I, I did hear from IDP's, um, council this afternoon, just checking on the status. Uh, I did review the contract, had some, uh, questions and revisions. Uh, they sent it back with, uh, it was satisfactory. So Pete has the contract, uh, it's now with South Tifton Development. And so we're good to go on the contract, I let them know that. Uh, I'm going to send them some, uh, some title information. So it's, and we're, we're in good shape, ready to go.
Excellent. Good deal. Okay, any other questions concerning the purchase and sale agreement for that project? Okay, uh, the next item is our resolution approving the board appointment policy. And we've all had that, that we've been able to look at, uh, for some time now. Um, and there's a copy in your packet. And I'm gonna open it up. I've got some questions, but I'll save my questions till y'all, if y'all have any questions, I'll go after you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, okay. In the application requirements, we have here that applicant must be, um, obviously, you know, we've got to provide, you know, by ordinance or by the bylaws of the respective board, but there must be a resident of the city of Tifton, a business owner within the city of Tifton, a registered buyer, not have any outstanding debt owed to the city or adjudicated code enforcement cases. Do, what, would it be prudent to add property owner? Or does it need to be business owner? Because you could have a business owner, I mean, excuse me, a property owner, who maybe rents a commercial building, the property owner doesn't live in the city, but their property is. So I just want to throw that out, it doesn't, just a thought. We don't have to decide that tonight, but just a thought. The other question that I have is under the interviews section on that first page. All registered applicants shall be interviewed by the city council. Uh, period applicant interviews will take place at the regular scheduled workshop. I thought we were going to add staff liaison and/or staff liaison to that sentence. You don't remember that?
Yeah, we, we were going to do something where, where you had some leeway and.
But we wanted to, the input of the, the boards and the staff liaison. For example, if it was planning and zoning, be able to have Danny participate in that or, you know, that kind of thing. So it's not just the council that's doing that interview for prospective applicants.
Yeah, and I thought we were talking about not, not necessarily bringing one in front of the entire council.
Right, exactly.
It was kind of true discretion as to what to do.
But I just want to make sure that the staff person that would work with that group could be present if they wanted to be or we wanted them to be, that kind of thing.
I just, we could just do, uh, city council and/or staff.
Just that, and/or, just do that, that's it. The other thing that I, I don't know where it belongs in here, but, um, once, if you'll recall, once we, once a board member is sworn in, that, that swearing in process involves upholding the charter of the city of Tifton, upholding the laws of the state of Georgia and the constitution of the United States. I think we need to add something to that, maybe that part of it concerning the city's policy. Because once you become sworn in as a board member representing the city of Tifton, you're now representing the city of Tifton, much as any of us do. And so how things are presented maybe on social media, how things are presented to the public can be very important because these board members, while we very much appreciate and value their service and their time and their effort, if they're, you know, posting things on social media that are contradictory or negative regarding the city of Tifton or the role that they're fulfilling. It could jeopardize, especially when you get into some of these, like the planning and zoning boards and historic president, they're making decisions that have great financial impact, positive or negative, on the applicants. And so we just need to be very careful, I think, or board members need to be very careful, just as we need to be very careful with the messages that we're, we're putting out there from a social media standpoint. And I don't know where that goes in here. So I'm just going to throw that out for consideration.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, even though they're not quote elected.
No, that's right.
If you want to accept a position, you have to realize with that, we all have freedom of speech. But you have to be aware that if you take a position.
Just be cognizant of it.
Now you have to be aware of what, of, of what you're saying.
Right.
And, you know, because it, it can reflect poorly on, on the city or the, the board you're on and that kind of thing. You're, you're no longer just, you know, Joe Q citizen.
And it, and that's something to consider, you know, like I said, we greatly appreciate the time and effort that our volunteers provide for us. I mean, we couldn't do what we do without their assistance. But it's just to make that, just to make people aware to think of it. I'm not saying it's prohibited, I'm just saying to be cognizant of it.
We could, we could always do a watered-down version of our social media policy for city employees.
The city has a policy.
That all the, all the board members, not so much it has to be in here, but we get new board members, current board members, they have to sign. That social media and, and what, what they, you know, what they say could, could impact on.
And then the last thing that I have is I know when they're sworn in, they do commit to go to training, any city provided training, at city expense, that kind of thing. I don't see anything regarding training in the general appointment policy. To me, I, I just think we need to have a line or two that says, by the way, you may be asked to participate in training, depending on what board it is. Some of it's very extensive training and very important training. Some of it's, you know, kind of few and far in between. So I don't know if we need to add any kind of line regarding, just a reiteration of, of, you're expected to fulfill your training requirements. And if you don't, you can't make decisions, especially, like I said, planning and zoning and HBC are the two that come to, and DDA are the three that come to kind of the top of my mind as far as, you know, those really important roles and, and those organizations that need, um, very specific training that, that we will provide for them and that, you know, we'll cover the cost of.
Thought we put that in there.
I didn't see it.
Jessica, do you remember anything on that?
No, the, the policy really just, I mean, if it is, it's probably going to be in the back where it talks about all the, um, different, you know, awards and policy is just a non-reasonance about how to appoint and not really, um, what their requirements.
He probably talked about it. We could certainly, um, it's just an understanding on the, on the procedures for appointments, that there's going to be required training for.
And that could be part of the interview process. There may need, we may need to create kind of a, a checklist with the interview to say, okay, for your particular board, you understand that you're going to have to get X amount of hours of training per year or maintain a certain level of training or something. I just want to make sure that people are aware of that.
And probably also make mention in the interview process, you're going to be also looking at the character of the individual. So if you already see that they have an issue with Facebook, I mean, you're going to do your due diligence. If, if you're truly going to do an interview against somebody, you're going to do your due diligence. You're going to look at what they have posted in Facebook in the past. And if that's something that you deem to be, in a point that could cause issue, uh, on the committee or on the board or whatever in the past, then obviously you would just, you know, move along, move away from that, from that applicant. But, uh, you know, I don't, I don't know about getting going as far as having them sign a waiver saying, okay, you're not going to go out there and post something ridiculous. I think that's a part of that interview process.
I'm not talking about that extensively, but I, but just, just be cognizant.
Yeah, yeah, you don't, I mean, we don't want anybody out there bashing us or whatnot. I mean, but at the end of the day, we are elected and they have the right to bash us.
Right.
If we, if we.
But they also represent the city when they, 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 they made a pledge to uphold the charter of the city of Tifton. And so that's, that's important, you know.
Yeah, sure.
I know, I know.
I think, I understand what you mean. I'll, I'll take a look at ours and just have that available, um, as, as we bring it forward again.
Okay, all right. All right, those are my questions. Did y'all have any questions?
I think those are fantastic questions.
Well, thank you Wes.
You did a good job there.
Okay. The next item on our workshop agenda are the, uh, with the ordinance section, um, and this is what Danny was talking about a minute ago, um, with the, uh, ordinances, amending the land development code, uh, on those three items we talked about earlier. Any questions, comments before we actually respond for those items? Do you want to talk about the removal signs of the youth leader? And I wish the housekeeping had been.
And that was around the, it was the intent of that ordinance was to just simply change the name of our department to community development. Uh, and it was inadvertently, uh, the old sign ordinance was inadvertently put in there. So this is just to change that. It was not intended to be that at all.
Okay. Just want to make sure if I understood that staff.
And just so you all know, this is, what is proposed is the same thing you called pass in two thousand seventeen. Because basically puts it back to work in the morning to do it two thousand seventeen. Has it, the mistake where, or it really has changed that, or what before.
I'm going to ask a silly question here. I know that some right of ways are diff- I mean, there's, the right of ways are different on, on pretty much every street. And normally the right of way is behind the power pole. Is there a way to, is that right?
Behind power poles, sidewalks, fire hydrants, water meters, telephone pedestals. I mean, it's behind all of those.
I was wondering, is, is there a way to make a, uh, like a generic, like where it's not different as, as it is like that in every, on every street? I mean, where you could say, hey, I don't know, two foot, um, there's an easement on two foot of every property or whatever? And just make that.
John will have to correct me on this, but, um, all those utilities require a different, you know, a different, uh, number of feet in between. So you can't have water or sewer together. Uh, so I feel that's the reason why you have those, why.
I see.
And that also depends on the type of street it is. So if it's a conterrier street, you know, it requires a lot of riding.
I see.
Or.
I've always wondered that. I, I, I've, we've had, and, and I guess I've just never received the answer to that. But to Wes's point, why can't we say, you know, for these signs, they have to be ten feet from a curb of the street? Then there's no question that it's, you know, it, what gets me is easy to, right there on the street and I can go through right now in my area and I bet you I can count fifty that they're right there on the street.
Well, you know, they've always been very good, you know, and, and, I mean, we deal with signs all the time and, and my, and they've been very good to help us identify rights. Like there's an area where it's just not clear, you're just not sure. I just call them and say, look, I, I need to put a sign out at this location. About how far do I need to be back? But it's, it's really pretty simple. If you'll just look for the utility boxes or the sidewalk or something, it's not, it's not a difficult thing. And this really only comes up in political season.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I'm just trying to make it easy. The political signs themselves don't go that far in the ground. So that's what I'm saying, can we make a generic, say, listen, twenty-four inches off of the curb, you can put, um, oh, not twenty-four inches, twenty, you know, two foot, uh, you can, yeah, that's twenty-four inches, yeah, okay. Anyway, put the political signs two foot from the curb or whatever. You know, now obviously the real estate signs, they may go a little bit deeper because they need a little bit more structure or whatever. Obviously that needs to go back a little bit further. And I think that you guys have, when that issue came up, when I first got on council, I think that you guys have adapted very well to that policy. But, you know, making it somewhere where it's not, you know.
So harder.
I mean, because let's say, for instance, the state, um, uh, Senate campaign. I mean, the guy from Corahill, he don't know anything about the city of Tifton. And then, and the guy from Tifton doesn't know anything about what the city of Corahill does. But if we can go out there and say, hey, listen, as long as you're two foot off of the line, any political sign, yard sign, whatever, uh, it's, it's good to go. I mean, is that, is there a reason why we wouldn't do that?
Can I make a, a comment?
Yeah.
Um, I think what we might want to consider is what is the purpose of not having them on the right? I don't know that you're really obstructing any underground utilities. That's, I mean, you can pull up the sound, I think about it in the hangar. I always thought the purpose was visibility.
Yes.
At intersections.
Yes.
And so it, I don't know what really matters, where is the right of way? I think what matters is how far back you have to have them so as to maintain visibility. That's what I would really want to add.
And, and two feet doesn't do it, yeah. I would say two feet would be perfect. No, two feet's too close.
But they're going to call, this, this is saying that they'll call if, if they go by and see your sign's in the right of way. They'll call you and say, Wes, I just rode by your sign on Eighth Street and it's in the right of way. Do you mind moving it back a little bit? And then you know it. They're going to call, that's what is saying.
And I get that. But, you know, I mean, if it was, you wouldn't have to call, you could focus your time on that.
Well, then we'd have to change the ordinance.
Be that. Although I do say, yeah.
It's election season, so you also have to think about the alarm, one eight hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's about clutter and.
We go, we go to junk cars. That's mainly what it'd be going.
Yeah, but if, if, I mean, like I said, if you're twenty-four inches off of the property line and you're on somebody's property and they put a, an alarm sign on there, I'm going to pick it up and throw up the trash because that sign don't belong there, you know? I mean, it's not my sign, you know? But if I have my roof done and they want to put out a sign while they're working, I don't mind that, you know?
But they're going to put that in your yard. They're not going to put that out on the right side.
If it's on, yeah, I'm saying, if it's in, within that two-foot buffer, you can rip that thing out of the ground and do whatever y'all got to do. And at that point in time, y'all could put that fine back in, like y'all were talking about, was it three dollars a sign or something like that?
It's in there.
It's still in there.
It's still in there.
Damn, I thought we got rid of it.
We're trying to encourage people because we understand that it's very confusing. And right of ways are different everywhere. You might have sixteen, you might have eight, you might have a two-foot right of way.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
So, you know, we call people and say, hey, your sign is in the right of way. And if you give it, we, we do do that.
I mean, to, but to, to Rob's point, the whole issue is obstruction, are you obstructing the view? Now, I'm personally not going to call. If there's a, if signs are obstructing the view, before we have two cars hit or they hit a runner or something, the sign needs to be yanked up and off of there. And, I mean, it, at what point are we obstructing view and, and risking an incident?
Well, the, the, the irony is it's been working. What they're doing is working. It's just, there was a, this is just housekeeping. So, so the, the, the plan that we adopted a couple of years ago has been effective.
Well, I know that, and I'm just being. I can give you ten, I can give you ten houses to call. A friendly city, trying to be a little bit more friendly. I'm glad that that mask doesn't show what you really want to say to me.
You can't say that I'm sticking my tongue out. All right. All right, thank you for that, um, comment.
But let's look into that.
Okay. All right, any other questions on this housekeeping issue? Okay. Uh, item fourteen is an ordinance bringing an amendment to the gas supply contract and supplemental contract with municipal gas authorities. George, Pete, you got some updates on that?
Um, really, I, I don't. This is a, um, a standard, um, ordinance and amendment to our gas supply contract with, um, MGAG. And realistically, the board has talked about it, they voted on it, they wanted to take the option of extending it for, for another ten years. And again, it's really administrative for all, um, municipal gas authority, um, members. So it's, it really is just looking forward because obviously the gas and, and what, uh, pricing and our supply has to do. So may, trying to maintain as much continuity as we can within the pricing and within the system. But this is something the board has created and is sending out to all the members.
Okay, and that, that contract is in our, our packet. Does anyone have any questions on that, from MGAG? All right, city manager report.
Okay, thank you, Mary. The only, um, two things I wanted to share with you is, um, seniors, uh, will be returning to the senior citizen center on the fifteenth. Uh, we won't be doing any exercise class and Ms. Fran, uh, is ready for that, uh, as far as cleaning and, uh, what we're doing. We have not rented out the facility as of yet, uh, but she's working on that as well. But the seniors are ready to come back, I can tell you. And, um, and so, um, we'll, we'll go forward with it. If there's any issues, obviously we'll, um, we'll, we'll deal with those. And then secondly, um, the police department and the fire department, uh, have applied for a grant, uh, under the CARES Act. Both, some monies have opened up. Uh, the police department is for safety and for PPE, et cetera. And then fire department, actually, the chief, um, wrote a grant, part of this CARE Act, to see if we could get money is through, um, three positions full-time. is through, um, three positions, full-time employees. So, uh, that's something that, uh, we're, we're working as well. So I know that Chiefs are, are doing that, but if there's money out there, we're looking for it and, um, and I know they filed that, so I'll keep you posted.
Alright, excellent. Alright, any questions about the Manager's Report? Alright, uh, we've got a, a special call meeting after our workshop meeting and then we'll go into executive session. Um, but I wanted to take just a few minutes, um, to make a comment. I wanted to start the comments this evening. Usually I start with one of you, but I wanted to start those comments this evening. And, um, you know, I like to read my comments when I've got something that's very pressing and very important to make sure I don't leave something out. And I'm going to take my mask off, Jack, so you stay back there because I feel like y'all can't hear me.
I'm safe back over here.
You're safe back there and I'm about to burn up. Alright, and these are my comments for the evening. To say that the events happening around our country at this time are challenging and upsetting is an understatement. What happened to George Floyd was an inexcusable criminal act. We must put our faith in the justice system that the criminals who committed that act will be held accountable and be handled appropriately. These criminal actions have shaken our country and sadly have caused deeper division among all people and all races. But we, or you, Tipton, are better than that. And we cannot and will not let this horrific situation shape who we are or how we respond. As it pertains to the city of Tipton, I wanted to address a few things. One, that the leadership of this city, I want everyone to hear this, the leadership of this city along with each and every member of the Tipton Police Department are committed to working with the citizens, the businesses, the property owners, and the visitors of this community. In this time, we hear and understand the tremendous pain and the frustration that Mr. Floyd's death reveals. Police Chief Steve Hyman is interested in how we can improve and I want you to know that he is open to constructive input to make our police department the absolute best that we can be. The officers in our police department receive extensive training on the use of force and our internal policies are very detailed. Command staff will be reiterating past training and will be communicating to all shifts to make sure that expectations are acknowledged. The city of Tipton Police Department is actively communicating with residents about what's going on, how they can be a positive resource, and they're listening to the concerns that our residents share. The Chief encourages anyone that has any information that they'd like to share with him to just reach out to him. I hope that each of you will help each of us in preventing negativity from spreading. As with the current COVID crisis that we are still living through, we will work to be our best. And we will do our best to provide you with information, address your concerns, and be proactive in finding solutions to protect each and every one of you regardless. Regardless of your address, regardless of your ethnicity, regardless of your race, regardless of your age, regardless of your circumstances. And I hope that you will join me in this city council in celebrating our diversity and standing for each other in just causes and for working together to take care of each other and in doing so, take care of our great city. As we've said all along, we are Tipton Strong, and those words don't have an origin in racism, in violence, or in hatred. Those are words of hope. They're words of encouragement and of commitment to each other, that we will be better as a result of the challenges that we face today. So, um, I want us to keep this community in our prayers. I want us to keep our state and our country in our prayers and certainly keep Mr. Floyd's family and all those who are suffering in our prayers. Because it's a, it's a challenging time and it's something that we all, I think, feel very compassionate about. So thank y'all for letting me share that, uh, that message. And now I'll call on each of you for any comments that you may have. Jack, I'm gonna start with you since you're way back there.
Way back here, okay. Well, um, first, I agree with you a hundred percent, Mayor. Thank you. That, that's, uh, same way I feel. And, and I'll continue in my vein of, safety is always my thing. It has been for many years. And whether it been golf carts, or whether it been stop signs, or whether it been walking and riding, or walking and running on the correct side of the street without getting hit. Today, it's masks. I applaud the council and the employees of, of wearing masks. I, this is not about the government controlling us. This is not about having fear. This is, this is about following medical guidance, whether it be the CDC, whether it be my own personal doctor, whether it be the CEO of our medical system. When they say, please, wear a mask when you go out, I listen to that. This mask doesn't protect me. It's protecting all of you. When you don't wear a mask, in my personal opinion, you're saying, hmm, I don't really care about others because I'm okay. Well, no, you not wearing a mask puts me at risk. Two people mask to mask, the risk of you getting is like one and a half percent. You facing somebody, you have a mask and they don't, your risk is like fifty or sixty percent. So when I go in the store in Publix the other day and three-fourths of the people no longer have masks, they think this is over. It's not over. We can continue to go face-to-face, no mask, or you don't wear one and the rest of them do, and be right back in the same boat. We don't wanna be back in the situation of this thing exploding, businesses have to shut down. This hasn't been the greatest thing, having to sit here, but it didn't kill any of us to have to sit here with a mask on. But it protected every one of us from getting this virus, because we don't know if we have it or not. So, it is personal with me. I'm now in that elderly category, as a couple of us are. Johnny not to call you out, but you and me are together.
Dang. Oh, man.
But just think about it. You're protecting other people when you wear a mask. And when you don't wear a mask, hmm, if you get it, you get it. Not worried about you. So, anyway, I, I do appreciate everybody that has the warning.
Alright, MJ?
Uh, right now, I guess we're still, you know, protecting ourselves and each other going through these times. And, uh, also, I know we've got some of these, uh, you know, times that we just don't know what's going on. But I know we, 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 we got a heart, we got a good soul, uh, you know what's real. And everybody in this room has seen what's real. And you can feel it. You know, so, we won't have to go down that road, but it is real. And we don't know what's gonna happen. But I know a lot of folks and a lot of ancestors have, uh, lived through a lot. And we still gonna live, but it's real, y'all. And if you got a heart and you got a soul, you know what I'm saying? I got friends from every single race across this country, across this whole nation. And I love them just like they my mom or daddy and anybody else in this room. I see no call. I'd do anything in here for anybody. I don't have to know you for years. I could've met you just one day or a day ago. And I mean that. So whoever you pray to, you pray to him for his world, his nation, and what's going on right around. Because it ain't gonna be right till we come together.
Thank you, MJ. Mr. Harrow?
Well, check what Mr. Harrow just said. I don't see color of areas. I come up in the movement. And I've been, I've, I've, uh, this violence that I see now has thrown me back to the sixties when I was in the movement. Things, but I was in a peaceful movement. We didn't wanna go out and burn up a store, burn your house down, or, or start a fire. We just, my, our main objective was to, to, to get people registered to vote, get a good quality education, and to ensure that ain't just us for all. Those are my comments. Now, I ain't got no problem with, with, you know, i- if you wanna protest, that's fine with me. I would wanna help you. But I'm not gonna jump in there and help you and you break it down in somebody's house or throwing rocks at somebody's stovepipe. I ain't, because it's not just us. Just vigilantes doing this. This is not, this is not what we are about. So now, Tipton, as a whole, from the time, the move, when I was in the movement in Tipton, as a whole, we have not had these kind of problems. We have kinda all met, got along. There's, there was a separation line. But Tipton has always been bordered by, we came together to face these obstacles. We didn't, we didn't just say, well, that's Jack's problem, or that's Wes's problem. We said, it's Tipton's problem. And that's what we did. So, and, and that's what I'm saying we should do now. We got to listen to people. You know, everybody's got some problem. You know, I got a problem, you got a problem. We got to listen to the community. That's what we are here for. This, this is our job. This council is to listen to what the community is saying. And, and I think we got a, 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 a damn good police department. I think we got a damn good Chief and a bad Chief. These are the two guys that I respect most for offering in the, the city of Tipton. Now, my thing is this, if you got a problem, call somebody, talk to, let, let's, let's listen to, to the problem. There's a, a particular family that, eh, that live in my district that have problems. And when the police come, they maybe come two or three cars. That kinda pisses them off. Why are all these coming to one, to want to our house for just this one incident? Well, when they get there, it escalates. That, it escalates. I've seen it happen. But all I'm saying to these guys, we have got to face these problems here for Tipton. And if we face them here, they could be faded out. Somebody from Waycross might say, well, hey, Tipton did this. The fix there. You know, uh, forever. But we've got to listen to our constituents. And don't jump the gun, but just take the gun and use it to go, you know, like you, well, when they got a problem, they bring it to them. They bring it back to us. We move on them. We can't just keep kicking the can down the road about certain problems. Because these things are happening. The health problems, if, if something's serious, we, we need to look at that. And, 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 and communicate, communities are better men in our, in our community. Need to, we need to look at that. We know, we just need to think of Tipton as, uh, the time was people said, a pillar. We all in this same, uh, together.
That sounds like my turn, sir.
It's just my turn.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Julie, first, I wanna say that your, your comments were spot on. MJ, I heard, felt the emotion in your, in your comments. And Johnny, you've, you've been fighting to fight for equality since the sixties. Over sixty years ago.
Yeah.
You know? While things have changed, some things have changed. There's still some things that we have to work on. And a friend of mine, he messaged me on Facebook and he said, I was, I made a post on Facebook and, um, he messaged me and he said, you know, you are a leader in this, in the city of Tipton. What have you done? What, what have you done about this situation? And I thought about it. And, you know, I, I, you hear people always say, you have to, we have to put people in office that will listen. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta go out and vote. Are they waiting to put the people in office in Atlanta? Or are they talking about the people in DC? And Johnny, you and I both talked this afternoon. If we waited for Atlanta or DC, we're gonna be waiting forever. So what we have to do is take action here in the city of Tipton, the area that we can control. And one thing, and I've emailed everybody about this and texted them about what I would propose is us creating a Citizens Review Board that would look at stuff and work along with our internal affairs if there is a complaint.
I think we need, yeah.
Vice Mayor, with all due respect, uh, there are a lot of solutions. There are a lot of things that we can do and leaders can't copy or can't react to a situation. I could tell you that today, all the words and all the emotions that you're feeling, we could do things that would be absolutely one-hundred percent effective. But I could tell you, there are so many in, so many things that go beyond the scenes that with situations that go beyond, uh, what happened last week, go beyond what judgment, poor judgment, go beyond the sixties and go beyond caring for each other. This is a whole different level that citizens don't understand. This is why the mess that we're in. I could tell you without a shadow of a doubt, I would offer to you as a solution, let's get a panel or a group of individuals in the community, just what Johnny said, let's just talk. Because what we don't know, we can't fix. Or what s- someone could offer us with the Police Department, why do we need three cars? Why can we do this? But citizens, we have to hear them. We have to hear them. And I ask you and I, I plead with you, just in all due respect, that if we open up and bring all the races in to talk about our community, I think that would go a whole lot better and a whole lot further, getting the attention and getting some input versus other things, looking at departments. Because I could tell you, there's a lot of things that go in behind a review board and things that, perception that people don't understand. Give us the opportunity to find out what's being said in the community and what we could do about it, please.
And that, I think that's what I was trying to say with, you know, let, let the Chief know.
And I appreciate y'all. I didn't interrupt y'all's com- comments. Um, and so, you know, I like that same, uh, respect, I guess. But, uh, let me finish what I was trying to say. I'm not sitting here saying that we don't have a, a damn good Police Department, because we do. I'm not saying that at all. We have to be proactive instead of reactive. And I guess that's what I'm, I'm suggesting with this. And I don't know if a Citizens Review Board is the exact, is the exact answer or not, but it is the step in making sure that nothing like that happens here in our community. No matter what color you are, or what sexual, uh, r- person you are, or whatever, it doesn't matter, you know? What we are making sure of is that our community is safe for all of its citizens. And it is. I'm not saying that I've not, I've not, um, had any calls or anything different, but I know that it's better to be ready to act than to react. So, I guess that's where I was coming from, but, you know, uh.
One good thing, though, to add to what you're saying, is when we started the conversations to create the urban redevelopment area.
Yeah.
And we invited neighborhoods to come in and, and talk to us about, what are the challenges in your neighborhood? What do you see? What, you know, what are your frustrations? That began some of that conversation that you're talking about. So, I think, uh, I think y'all are both kinda saying the same thing, but it, coming in from a different perspective. I think we can continue those con- even though we have the urban redevelopment area and the agency and all that, we can continue to have those conversations so that our citizens are aware of the training that, uh, Police Department receives. And, and the Police Department can hear the concerns or the challenges that the neighborhoods have and that kind of thing. And I think that's what, that is where they do such a good job. I know, everybody in this world knows Steve Hyman. And it's because he's out there listening, talking to people. And I think we can expand on that. I think that's what Pete's saying. And I think that's what you're saying in, in a little different, y'all. And I think we can expand on that, and I think that's what Pete's saying, and I think that's what you're saying in, in a little different, y'all are just coming, it's the same, it's the same process, but you're coming at it in two different senses.
It's, it's a great idea, there's just a lot of motions behind it because of everything that, again, goes beyond, you know, what citizens see and, you know, what, and how it impacts. It's one wrong move, it just, it, it completely cripples you. And everything that we're trying to do to build up, uh, and fix could be torn down so easily, and I respect that. And I think it's a, a good way of looking at it. And, uh, there's some things that certainly can be done from a leader's perspective, and what are you doing? And how can we organize something as the first step? Because, you know, reaching out, that's, that's the number one thing. And letting the community know that we'll, I, I, just like you, I'll do anything that, that we can, or for, from a personal standpoint. But getting dialogue and opening it up, and I think that's where some of the society is failing, because they just don't ask the questions, and we don't understand the emotions of what's happening in some of the neighborhoods, and we've got to repair that.
I mean, I agree, I mean, it's definitely an emotional.
Let me jump in there, Wes, I, I agree with you, you mean this proactive versus reactive, absolutely. Now, my view of being proactive is to make sure with Chief Hyman that we have the policies and the procedures in place. Because that's, that's how you be proactive, or is the training there, is all this? To avoid having an incident where then we're reactive, and this committee has to then go into place. Well, if you never have an incident because you've been proactive and have your policies and your training in place, then you don't have to call on the other. And so that, you're absolutely right, we don't need to react, we need to be proactive. But I think that's, that's how you, how you go and be proactive to it.
Well, I guess, uh, another issue, and that's, that's, I mean, obviously, I know our police is, is well-trained. We look at, we, we pass the training bunch of parts, so I know that they're well-trained. But, you know, the officer that put his D on a man's throat, that was not a training tactic, uh.
He's a criminal.
Exactly.
That's right. Well, there was another fellow, if you saw the other video today, one of the protesters, the police had him on the ground, had his knee on their neck, the other policeman with him pushed his knee off, made him wear, and pushed his knee off of his neck. So those police force had the wrong, I mean, you've got, you've got some bad apples, and they use force first, and, you know, and so, it, it's just.
It just doesn't find, it does not define the men and women of police officers in the uniform today, it doesn't define them, and it's not fair. And we're, we, we just can't think that way.
And it doesn't define us, and I guess that's what my message was.
It doesn't define Tipton Police Department.
Right.
And it doesn't define the officers here.
That's right.
We, the training is good and we do it, but you also got to look at the person, too. And our officers talking to them and listening to them, they all feel that that is wrong, they know it's wrong. But then, it's like, I tried to talk to them about, we have, we are Tipton Police Department, okay? We're not the other police officers you see on TV doing these wrong things. We are Tipton Police Department, we're gonna be judged by what we do, and we're gonna do it right. If we have somebody that steps outside of the line, then we will take care of that, and we'll handle it like it's supposed to be. So don't group us in what you're seeing on TV.
And I'm not, I hope, I hope my comments aren't meaning that I'm, I'm associating you, or any of our cops, with, 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 with what happened, because that, I'm clearly not. But I, I just, I'm just trying to avoid, not only am I trying to avoid having something like that happen in our community, but also give the peace of mind that if you live in the city of Tipton, and you live in Tipton County, you, you are, you, I mean, if you do wrong, you're going to ghost jail, and, and it is what it is. But, you know, it's not going to be, you know, I guess, well, I'm trying, I guess it's not gonna be.
That, that guy right there.
And I know.
Just said that.
Exactly.
And, and I trust him, and we appointed him to be our police chief because of his character and his leadership abilities. And, um, I remember the night that Steve Hyman was told he was gonna be the police chief. That was such a huge step for this community. To have Steve Hyman, who's worked for this department for thirty years, four, I don't know how long, Steve, forever, I don't even know how long.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven years, he's not thirty-seven years old, he's worked here for thirty-seven years.
I am thirty-seven.
But I just remember being so excited at the diversity of this organization. You have women in leadership roles, you have an African-American police chief, you have young, you have those who are more elderly than us, I'm being a little silly, but, but, but the point is, the diversity and the respect of that department is pretty impressive. And, and what my statement was meant to, to be was, it, it was to the community. We got this for you, Tipton, because of those gentlemen over there, and the men and women that work in their departments, and the work that they do, and the training that they do. And like Steve said, the character of the officers. Are they always friendly, maybe not, are they always, you know, maybe not? But when, when the going gets tough and it gets down to them serving and protecting this community, I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that they will do that professionally, without consideration for anything other than, did you break the law? And I'm gonna treat you with courtesy and respect. May have to take you to jail, may have some circumstances that you might not be happy with, but you don't have to worry that your life is in danger if you're dealing with this department. And I think that's what you're trying to say, too.
That's what I'm trying to, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that that is exactly what happens.
And that, that is, and we've got that man's commitment, that that is how this department is run. And that man's commitment, and that man's commitment. So. You good?
You gotta go to executive session?
Well, no, we got, we got a schedule, we're gonna, okay, if there's anything else to come before the workshop, I'm gonna close the workshop, and I'm gonna open the, um, special call meeting, because we've got to, um, go over the, um, what, what actions the council wants to take regarding the, um, alcoholic beverage license, and then after that, just done, uh, the resolution on the purchase and sale in South Tipton. That was time-sensitive, so we have to get that on the agenda for the special call meeting. So we're now in our special call meeting, as you know, we don't vote in our workshop, but we do vote in our regular meetings, and this would be considered such. So, um, you'll recall that we had, um, licensing reviews, uh, for, um, three different, um, locations of, um, convenience stores. I don't know if anyone has any questions of Rob, um, or of Pete, or of, um, Chief Hyman concerning those investigations for selling to underage buyers. Uh, we'll take these one at a time, uh, we need to decide what is the action for the alcoholic beverage license for Jay Shree Maharad, I'm not gonna butcher that name, Sales Corporation doing business with Speedo Number One located at nineteen thirty-nine Witten Mill Road for underage sales violation.
Mayor?
Yes.
Based on this location having, it might have been one incident where they got cited, but there were multiple occurrence where we had received multiple instances where complaints, I guess. And as I asked during the meeting, did you even fire the person that did it? The answer was no. I move, we have a sixty-day, we suspend their license for sixty days, and then they have to pay the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar reinstatement fee.
So we have a motion on the table for a sixty-day suspension and then a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar reinstatement fee. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to make a, make a comment, I guess. Um, Rob, uh, the, do we have, all right, so a complaint, do we have complaints on other stores, do we not know of?
Not that I know of, these are the ones with the box of my attention.
Um, the complaints, I guess, signify for the investigation to happen, I guess, is that's what, that's.
That's what initiates the investigation.
All right, that's what initiates the investigation, all right. Um, and Speedo was cited more than once?
That's from a reelection, I didn't, I think, I think.
Cited, cited more than once. In, in a calendar year, or just this once, that, like, is it multiple?
I think it was within about two.
I remember one of them had multiple.
The Speedo ones that had their car. I think that's the one that had one.
They just had one?
Yeah, I think the one that had the, uh, twelve in Park is the one that had two. I think it was the Handy, the Handy Stop is the one that had several.
Okay, all right, and then, all right, so Handy Stop had several, or, or more than one, um.
And that's the one on Twelfth Street?
Yeah, and then.
And then Pepe's.
Pepe's had.
At the corner of Twentieth and Forty-first, Pepe's had, I think, multiple complaints.
Multiple complaints.
They had more, I think there was complaints when they had one.
Well, they only have one.
One investigation, one, one.
One citation.
One violation.
One violation. But, well, I guess, you know, and I made the comment to the mayor earlier that, you know, I was thinking of a tiered system or whatever to create, you know, to get the fine, the first one, maximum fine that can be given. Second one would be the fine, thirty-day suspension. And then the third fine, or third, uh, would be, uh, re- revocation of the license and the maximum fine or whatnot. But we don't have anything like that in place as, as right now.
You know, basically, the order just really gives you the option of a suspension, a revocation, uh, we're taking, you know, no action, you know, against them. There's nothing in there that says you can give them a fine in lieu of, you know, the revocation or suspension.
So it's either a fine or taking the license?
There is no, we're processing a fine.
The two-hundred-and-fifty is the reapplication fee, they'd have to come back and reapply to be reinstated, is that a fair way to say that?
That's right.
Okay.
That's a reapplication.
So it's not a fine?
It's a reapplication fee that cannot exceed two-hundred and fifty.
Oh, good, all right. So a reapplication fee.
So, and that's what, I think, that, um, the motion in the second was, two-month suspension with them required to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the reapplication fee.
All right, so if, let me ask you this, so if the management changes, do they come in in thirty days and they can get an alcohol license?
No.
It's associated with the address, is it not?
Well, that's true.
We don't have to approve.
So the manager, I don't think he can do with them, I mean, if they have to change the ownership, it would take them that long to get alcoholized. They come and they just, I couldn't issue them until July, and then they'll stay alive. But it, that's what we thought.
So you're saying, even if they changed ownership, it would take that long anyway to go through the process, okay?
Okay.
Okay, did that answer your question?
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion and a second for a two-month suspension, and then paying the maximum of two-fifty for reapplication. Any other questions or discussions? All right, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And then, uh, the next one's, uh, same action on the Handy Stop located at two oh seven West Twelfth Street for underage sales violation, so we'll take a motion, uh, on how you want to deal with that.
This one was, uh, multiple.
Multiple places.
Same situation?
Same situation.
I make the same motion.
You make the same motion, so a two-month suspension of their alcohol beverage license and paying the maximum fine of two, I mean, the maximum of two-fifty for the reapplication fee.
This is the, this is the.
This is, this is, yes.
Multiple violations, as we went back, okay.
For the, for the Handy Stop. Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the third is Pepe's Food Mart located at nine twenty-one West Twentieth Street, again cited for underage sales violations, or underage sales violation. So I'll take a motion.
Same motion.
Same motion, okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you, so we have the same motion, same second. Any further discussion or questions?
Just to clarify, this is the one that only had one incident, or two, or multiple incidents?
They had multiple complaints, I can't remember if they had multiple.
Multiple complaints, one incident.
Just one, one violation, or two, okay, all right.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No, it's one nay. All right, and then the last item on our agenda for the special call meeting is the reg- resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement with South Tipton Development LP, that's in our urban redevelopment area. Uh, so I'll take a motion concerning that. All right, thank you, is there a second?
Sure.
Thank you, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ladies and gentlemen, good job, um.
Mayor, please, just, excuse me, just for clarification, please, Rob, on the seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, how do we communicate that to them? I cannot remember.
You, you will do that, I'll.
Be a litter?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with you tomorrow about giving it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, we will need to go into executive session for legal purposes, any other? This will go forever, okay? Uh, so I will need a motion to go into executive session for legal purposes.
Sure.
Thank you, is there a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. That was drafted. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll take about a two-minute break, and then we will go into executive session.